Okay, Joe, we are good to go. We are recording and live on YouTube.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a zoning board meeting. It's a web-based meeting held by a Zoom. We start with the roll call. Mr. Trata.
Present.
Mr. Rivas.
Present.
Mr. Delucia.
Present.
Mr. Rivero.
Present.
And Johanna, Chairman of the Board. Like to have a motion to accept the minute from August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of August twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five as presented.
What point of order, Mr. Chairman? If you could see Mr. Trata?
Oh, sorry about that. I'd like to see Mr. Trata for vacant seat. And, okay, uh, go ahead, Mr. Trata with the motion.
Yeah, I'm asking to approve the minutes of August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Trata.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rivas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next regular meeting is scheduled for October twenty three, two thousand twenty five. Now, we like to have a motion to open a hearing to hear uh, application number twenty five dash thirteen and application twenty five dash fourteen.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to open public hearings for applications twenty five thirteen, twenty one Second Avenue, and twenty five fourteen, ninety nine West.
Motion made by Mr. Trata.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rivero. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anyone represent the Second Avenue application?
Uh, yes, Chairman Hannah. For the record, Greg Ronaisen, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Collins Hanafin, one forty eight Deer Hill Avenue here in Danbury. I represent, uh, West Associates One LLC, which is the owner of the property at, uh, the corner of Second Avenue and Oakland Avenue. Uh, this property was owned by the West family, Judge Thomas West, for decades. My client, Michael West, is here on the call. We are asking this board to approve a variance. We need, uh, just a simple variance for a side yard setback from fifteen feet to six and a half feet. Uh, the property has been pre-existing, the structure for, like I said, decades, has been in the West family for decades. Where it's a multi-family zone. We're, uh, converting the property from a one-family to a two-family, which is an allowed use in the zone. We're actually, uh, minimizing or, or lessening the footprint a little bit, taking out a deck and something, modernizing the structure. And, um, just along with what we're doing, uh, the requirements for the side yard setback for a two-family is a little stricter than for a one-family, so that's why we're asking for this variance.
Yeah, I, I understand the property is corner property, correct?
Correct. Two front yards, two front yards, and, and the structure is pre-existing.
One front yard have, uh, seventy-five feet?
I think it has seventy-five feet, but, uh, uh, you mean frontage, Chairman Hannah?
Well, one, one frontage have to be seventy-five feet for multi-family.
Yeah, it is, yeah. So a hundred and forty-five feet on Oakland Avenue.
Okay. Can you tell us how big the structure you're gonna build? How many?
Yeah, this floor plan's included with the application, Chairman Hannah, and, and the structure is gonna be the same as it is. Basically, just slightly lessened because they're making the deck a little smaller and, and, uh, making a staircase a little smaller to make it more functional.
So already, you already have the setback non-performing, the old structure, correct?
I, I missed that, Chairman Hannah.
You said the existing structure, you just converted it to family.
Correct.
But the asking for setback goes from fifteen feet to six point five feet. Is that, is that this thing now?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any more question. Anyone from the board have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. What side of the property is this setback? Either side or the side on, on the non-street side? I mean, the side to the, if you're looking at the house to the left.
Yeah, that's the side it's on, Mr. Travis.
Yeah, but you're looking for the left side, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, yeah, because the other side, you don't have that kind of footage there.
Correct, correct. We have more, we have more, we have more setback on the other side, yeah.
Yeah, and there's not gonna be anything, like, added on. Is that correct? It's gonna be the existing house, and you're just gonna fix it up?
Correct.
Okay. And what was, what is the, um, do they have a problem with trespassing there?
Not to my knowledge. Uh, Mike West can chime in.
Because there were signs all over the place, red signs all over, no trespassing.
Well, good evening. The, the home is vacant right now, so.
Is that why?
Yes, so just for insurance, insurance purposes, so.
I was just curious. I saw some signs all over.
They didn't want you walking around there, Bill.
I stayed, I stayed in the car. I was afraid.
Just, yeah, just because it's vacant, that's all.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Looks like everybody had.
Uh, Chairman Hannah? Just a point of clarification. On my application and, and the legal, uh, owner of the property is West Associates One LLC. And just on this notice to meeting was just West Associates LLC. So I think that was just a typo, all right?
Okay.
So I just want to make sure, you know, my application was for West Associates One LLC, the, the legal owner, and when, you know, I'll straighten it out with, um, I just want to make sure that, you know, the paperwork is correct with that proper owner.
You have to keep some happy.
So it's what, uh, West Associates One?
The number one, Juan. The number one.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Juan. Yep.
Okay. Any more question from the board? Okay. Anyone can support this application?
Audio unmute. Hi.
Can you, can, uh, you please raise your hand next time and tell us what's your name and where you live, you know? You have to.
Hello? Hello?
Yes.
Hold on. I actually, this is, um, because my phone have a problem.
I don't know what happened.
Ma'am, ma'am, are you, are you gonna speak in favor of this application?
Okay, hi, my name's Stephanie Griffin.
Yes.
Yes, I would like to ask, uh, this thing, when you talk, did you finish on the topic or just one?
Okay, listen, let, let, are you in favor, are you in favor and support this application?
I, I disagree with thi- this application.
Are you in support or are you opposition?
What's your name? I'm not support application, I'm sorry.
Chairman. Chairman Hannah, could I just, I think, um, did I speak with you earlier?
Yes, correct.
Okay, this is, this is not the application for the driveway. This is a different application. You have to wait until that application.
Oh, I see. This is the first one, correct?
Yep.
Oh, okay. I thought that you're talking about the second one too. Okay, got you now. All righty, thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Melissa.
You have to wait, okay? I mean, anyone in favor of this application? Anyone in favor of this application? Anyone in opposition of this application? Anyone in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, you, you're, your microphone cuts in and out. We can't hear you.
My microphone? My mic? I'm, I'm next to it. I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, now you sound better.
Yeah, that's better, Chairman Hannah.
I'm, I'm close. I'm over the TV now, over the, uh, computer. Okay, anyway. Uh, we have a, a motion for.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close public hearing for application twenty five thirteen, twenty one Second Avenue.
Motion made by Mr. Trata.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rivero. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, uh, now.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to make a motion, like to make a motion to open application twenty five thirteen, twenty one Second Avenue for voting session and any further, any further discussion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Trata.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rivero. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion from the members.
Mr. Mo, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application twenty five dash thirteen, twenty one Second Avenue, West Associates One LLC. Greg A. Brunson, Agent RA Three Zone, Section Four dot C dot Three, reduced side yard setback from fifteen feet to six point five feet for conversion of existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling as per plan submitted. Uh, the reason I'm approving this, uh, application, the, uh, um, property has a hardship being that it's on two front yards, um, being that it has limited side yard setback space, uh, with the odd chip lot as well. Um, the variance will not adversely affect public health, safety, and welfare.
Motion made by Mr. Rivas.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rivero. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So approved.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Application twenty five dash fourteen, ninety-nine West Street. Anyone represent the application?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, good evening, uh, Dynus Verb, oh, sorry.
That's all I just opened. He, he basically said.
No, no, you don't need to open. It's already open.
We're, it's already open. We're good.
Okay, goodie, goodie for the record, Dynus Verbicus Professional Engineer, here on behalf of the applicant, um, who is, uh, seeking a variance, uh, to be able to install a driveway to serve the property located at ninety-nine, uh, West Street. Um, ninety-nine West Street, as you, well, may or may not know, um, has a single-family home located on the north side of West Street. And currently has no, uh, means of egress via its own, uh, privately-owned driveway, uh, from, from West Street. Um, currently, the vehicles enter in from the back through easements or perhaps through agreements, uh, with neighbors and so on. And the property owner would like to, uh, put in a driveway to serve, uh, this property on its own, like everybody else. We had initially worked on some concept drawings, uh, shared them with the city. Uh, we went, we met with Rob Barone from Construction Services regarding, uh, the proposed driveway location. And he seemed that it was a, a feasible request. Um, and he says, yeah, he says, work, work up some plans and submit them to the city for consideration. So we worked on some plans, and the challenge is that the property is pretty darn steep, uh, at the edge of West Street going up into the property. Um, approximately nine feet of elevation change. Uh, so in order to cut in a driveway, we're gonna have to do some serious cuts. And in an effort to minimize those cuts, um, we thought that perhaps the Zoning Board of Appeals might consider granting a variance to, uh, the slopes on the proposed driveway. As you may or may not know, uh, zoning regulations, uh, require, uh, a driveway to not exceed a, a grade of three percent from the edge of the road to the property line, and then for the next thirty-five feet or so, um, should not exceed a grade of eight percent, and then can go to a maximum of twelve percent grade. We had looked at, uh, putting in a driveway based on those requirements and found that, uh, we, we, we would not be able to reach the back of the property without coming up, uh, to, uh, to existing grade. Um, so again, we, we looked at, uh, steepening the driveway, uh, making some modifications to the requirements and have found that, um, by, uh, steepening the driveway a little bit, of course, once we get past the, uh, the, the sidewalk that we would replace in front of the, in front of the home. Once, once we get beyond the sidewalk, we would propose to go to a five percent gradient, which is still in keeping, well, it, it's, it's a little bit steeper than the three percent that's required. Um, but then we would go, once, once we've gotten into the site proper, we would propose to, um, run that driveway up at seventeen percent. And I'm not sure if, if, if you'll allow me to share a screen, perhaps I can help show the difference between uh, twelve percent and a, and a seventeen percent driveway? That'd be acceptable. Thank you. Thank you so much. I just, I just need to know how to work the magic here. I think I've done it. Now I need to get to the controls. Pardon me while I minimize you. Uh-oh. All right, so are you able to see the drawing now on the screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Terrific, thank you. So, um, I asked staff to make a modification to, uh, the drawing that was submitted and, and add some additional information. Uh, so on the left side of the drawing, where the cursor is currently rolling, is the driveway as we have proposed. Um, and roughly requires about eighty feet of, of cut and retaining wall work to occur in order for this driveway to go in at seventeen percent as we've proposed. Um, and that is indicated by the black line in the cross-section, which is pretty close to the top of your screens. So that would be the seventeen percent, uh, driveway as, uh, we've proposed. And again, at about eighty feet or so inward from the edge of the road, we're at existing grade. Um, and as, as we enter into the site, um, it requires various degrees of cut of earth, um, upwards of seven or eight feet, um, as we are close to the front property line. Um, the red line here indicates what a twelve percent driveway would be. And as you'll note, uh, to the drawing here on the right-hand side, that indicates how far we would have to excavate our driveway at twelve percent to get almost to grade here. Uh, we would have to still continue to cut a little bit more to flatten out an area in the back. So the difference, uh, between these two, uh, percentages, um, minimizes or, or helps minimize some of the earthwork that would be required to put in this driveway. Um, and as you can see on the, the cross-section, the slope does not, not much difference, but it makes a huge difference, uh, with respect to, uh, excavation, uh, on the site. And, you know, in some instances, let's say, uh, when we're at the, at the corner of the building here where there's a little bit of a bump out on the existing home, at seventeen percent, we only require two feet of cut. But if we were to go to twelve percent grade, we would still be at about five or a little bit more, uh, cut into grade. So we're trying to minimize our excavation work along the side of the, uh, the proposed home. And again, the, 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 um, the variances that we are, are seeking are for the driveway grades themselves. So that would be section eight, point B, point one, point little B, um, parentheses three. Um, so that's the driveway grades in it. Uh, other, um, regulation from which we're seeking, uh, variances, uh, for excavation and/or fill, uh, within five feet of a property line. And that's section eight, point A, point two, point C, uh, parentheses four. So we're seeking two, two variances, uh, from you folks, and, uh, we hope, uh, that, that you will, uh, you, you'll see to granting the variance for this application. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. Um, and, and I note that there also appeared to be a neighbor also that, uh, had some comments, so I will happy to answer those questions as well.
Okay. Some, I'm sorry, Joe.
I have, I have few question there, the, uh.
Yes.
House, this house is used as um, single family or is an office building? Is used for, for business, right?
I'm, I'm sorry, but this, uh.
It's an office?
No, this is a, a four, four-bedroom, single-family home.
Oh, but it's a, or Tel Engineering Group LLC.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's our, that's our company, that it's, that's a, a business that prepared the maps, uh, for, uh, the property owner.
How, how wide that driveway is gonna be?
That driveway is, uh, twelve feet wide.
Twelve feet wide. To the right side of the driveway, you have a neighbor, right?
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I have difficulty hearing.
Joe, every time you turn your head, you're, you go out.
To the right side of the driveway, you have a neighbor there, right?
Yes.
And you have a stone wall, or you're gonna build a stone wall?
Yes, we, we will, in, in order to, 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 uh, keep the sidewalk at grades that are acceptable to the city, uh, we will need to, uh, replace a, a retaining wall that runs along, uh, the property frontage, uh, along our property frontage as well as our neighbors' frontage.
I had a quick question. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's in that property there, to the right of the house, if you're looking at it from West Street, isn't there just a dirt kind of driveway there now, or is that a different?
It's just, it's a different, a different property. This, this property just has a, a set of stairs, um, leading up uh, from, from the road, from the road to the sidewalk, and then once you get in further, um, off of the sidewalk, there's another set of stairs that lead up, uh, through the front yard, and then there's yet another set of stairs that, uh,
Okay, so that must be next door. That must be next door. So what you're saying here, what you're proposing here is to take the driveway from a normal road where it comes up, at it off the street, into the initial property, and then as you go, grade it up. Is that correct? Because from your, from your drawing here, it looks like you want to stay at a, maybe a three or five percent grade and then increase to your.
Cor- correct. All, all the work within the, the city right-of-way, we want to keep, uh, well, we want to keep the sidewalk accessible, um, to all, so that, uh, you know, we, we're respecting that element of it, and then, uh, we're transitioning up, uh, and, and then once we get beyond the city right-of-way, we, we to turn, turn on the heat and, and steepen that driveway up.
Basically, basically what you're saying is staying to code to, for, for approximate drive from the road to a certain point on the property and then going up.
You, you, well, we, we're, we're staying, staying to code, uh, from, from the entryway to the backside of the, uh, the proposed sidewalk. So for about the first, um, so for about the first fourteen feet or so off the edge of the road.
And then you have to pull up because that's the way the property goes. That's the way the, the landscape goes.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
Those, um, the elevation lines on that cross-section with the red line on it?
Yes, sir.
Are those two feet apart each? Uh, my eyes, I can't see that small, but, uh.
Yeah, you, um, I, you know, I, I, I can, through the magic of this computer, I can zoom it in for you, if that helps.
Yeah, so.
Yes, there, there, there are two-foot contours between the lines.
Here, uh, a, a, a four-foot height difference than it would be at, at, at code.
Co- correct.
Okay. And that retaining wall that Joe was talking about, you, you, do you have permission to go on the other person's property, or that's something you've got to do to?
That, that's something that needs to get worked out also. So there, there's, it's, it seems there, seems there's no easy, um, proposals anymore. But yeah, we would need, uh, permission, you know, from, from the property owner, or, um, if, if not the property owner, then we would have to seek permission from the city to build a, a wall within the right-of-way to retain.
So, in that case, uh, a question to Sean. If we pass this and there's an impasse with either the property owner or the city, where do we stand? Because if we, we've approved this, it's been approved, and, um.
Well, the, the road opening would have to be permitted by the city of Danbury, so that's why Dynus mentioned that he did talk to Robert Barone, who is the, the permit inspector for Construction Services. So he started in the right area, but in order to take this project any further, Dynus would need to secure these, uh, grade variances and the, uh, proximity variances that he's in for. So that by no means is a slam dunk for this project if you guys do approve this application. There are, like you said, like Tony brought up, there are some easements or possibly, uh, you know, encroachments that have to be addressed, but that would be, that would be, I think, pursued by Dynus if this project passes muster here.
All right, thank you, Sean. And, and I mean, this, like you said, this, this is e- either the first step or, or the, or if, if the commission chooses the, the last step.
Well, if, if we approve it per plan submitted and you cannot make a, an arrangement with the adjacent property owner, then it would have to come back?
Correct. We, we would have to find, you know, other, other means or, or, or something of that nature.
We're only asking because we just came off of, uh, one where somebody went on the other person's property without permission and built a retaining wall, so, uh,
Yeah, that.
We don't want to open that door.
No, not, not at all. Everything needs to be done correctly or, or not at all.
Uh, I have a few questions, uh, uh, Dynus.
Sure.
How many, how many cars are we talking about, um, for this driveway? Or, or the, you know, at the top of the driveway there, what, what exactly are we looking for as far as numbers and, and vehicles?
Well, you're right, right now, the, as, as we've got it drawn in, it's, uh, about twenty-two feet, uh, you know, running in, inward from the property. So basically enough room to, to put in two cars comfortably or, or squeeze in three, not, not comfortably. Uh, and then there's a little turnaround key. And, you know, that's, that's what we're anticipating. Um, we had received a, a map from the surveyor indicating what, uh, what the property owner wished to put in, so.
And then, uh, my next question. Uh, why not, uh, Why not grade into the property and create carports? Wouldn't that be easier and avoid most of this issue with the seventeen percent grade?
Well, that, that's excellent question. And, and, you know, so there would be a challenge with that in that we would need a variance to build in the front yard. And we would still, still have to chase that seventeen percent grade, albeit not, you know, as far in. Still, still be some variances that would be required. But, but good question, thank you.
And then my last question. If this was to be approved, what sort of water retention and water management are we implementing with this? Being that this area is prone to flooding, you're already at a seventeen percent incline. Water, you know, you're gonna have a paved driveway up top. You got rainwater coming downhill. What are we doing and as far as water management and water retention?
Well, so, so we haven't, we have not crossed that bridge yet. But my initial thoughts are, once we get up to, to where the retaining walls would end, we'd, we'd rise up just a little bit more and then pitch some of that water back into the back of the, of the lot. So we could put in some kind of stormwater management in the back and then compensate for the driveway runoff. We would likely put in something subsurface in front of the home, capturing the roof drains. Because there's, I don't, I don't think there's really any way to, unless we have sand and gravel. I don't know if there's any way to really capture and treat that, that bit of runoff from the driveway.
I'm not, you know, I, I'm not expecting to catch all of it. Would, would the homeowner be okay with conditions being put in this application? If it was to be approved, that some sort of water manage, water retention system be put in place to catch this?
Yeah, I think, well, I think that, I, I think, you know, with a condition or, or not, certainly the planning, zoning and engineering would require it of us.
Can you come, confirm that, Sean, with me?
Uh, yeah, good, great question, Juan. The, the, the point discharge is prohibited in the regulations as it stands. And Robert Barone, again, who looked at it, is, is not a big fan of any sort of runoff going into his roadway. So Dynas would have to give us a plan that would show us and satisfy the city that there'd be no, and I see what you're saying with ice or anything like that that would occur during the winter time. But that would be part of his review. And if the board does mention that and there's stipulation to, that there is a, a, a storm drainage plan, we do standardly, we do ask for that anyway, but it's definitely within your purview one to request that.
Okay. And, and I, one more question, Dynas, I'm sorry about this. West Street was recently paved. Are, are we, within that five feet that you're asking, are, is there gonna be any tearing up of that newly paved West Street?
I, I, I hope not, but it's, it's likely there may be, you know, let's say a, a, a strip, you know, maybe two feet wide along the, the, the width of the driveway or, or maybe eight feet wide, excuse me. Two, two feet going inward from the road and then probably a dozen feet or so side to side. But again, then that's just to put in the concrete apron or, or asphalt apron, whichever Mr. Barone will allow. One correction I need to make, and I, I, I think I misspoke on the width of the driveway. The driveway itself is only ten feet wide as proposed. I think I had said it was twelve, my apologies for that.
How much was it?
It's ten feet wide. And, and I, I had thought that we added it twelve feet, my, my, my mistake.
Any other questions from the board? One question. Anyone in favor of this application? Listen, are you in favor or you opposition?
Hello, I can't hear you clear, sir. Can you speak again, please?
Are you in opposition or you are in favor of this application?
I disagree, I disagree with that, this application.
Okay, you better hold, wait. I have to ask the question, who is in support of this application first?
Okay.
Anyone in support of this application? Anyone that supports this application?
Mr. Chairman, you're, you're cutting in, in and out pretty bad. We can't hear you.
Anyone that supports this application?
Still can't hear you.
It's better now?
Yeah, when you stand back away from it, it's much better.
I don't know what's wrong with the internet tonight.
Right there, it's fine, right there, when you're right there, it's fine.
Anyone? I'm gonna repeat again. Anyone that supports this application? Anyone that supports this application? Anyone in opposition to this application? Anyone in opposition of this application? I don't know, she disappeared now, we don't know where she go.
There she is.
Where's she come over there? She moved. Are you in opposition now? Well, you are, you are muted. She, she is muted. I don't know how I'm gonna tell her.
Hello, hello?
Yeah, yes.
Tell us your, tell us your name and where you live.
Okay, my name is Catherine Jensen.
Yeah.
Yes, and I'm the owner of the next door.
Okay.
And I disagree with this. And also the reason is the driveway is too steep and it can cause a problem, especially to the main road on West Street when the, when the snow term, it, it can be easily slippery and it can, can cause another people like an innocent driver on West Street as well.
Where you live, you live to the right of the driveway?
I live in Ridgefield, but that's my rental property and some of my tenants live there.
And how's it gonna affect your property if you make a drive?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, sir.
Are you the prop, property owner on the right or the left looking at the house?
Uh, looking at the house, I'm on the right.
How is the driveway gonna affect your property?
Yeah, it's gonna affect because my house on that side, close to the driveway, very close. And if there is anything have to dig down and then have anything, construction, it's gonna affect the construction at the base of my house.
Your house have a driveway?
Have a driveway on the other side, not this side.
Oh. Okay.
But, but my house next to the, to the place that they want to make a new driveway, that's, that's exactly the house, but my driveway is on the other side, so.
I think how would a driveway on there affect your house?
If they have to have the instruction, dig, deep down and then change the steep and whatever the gentleman tried to explain, then the soil and everything that next to my house to make it a driveway, that will collapse and then it could cause the problem in the bottom, which is that house been building for many years already.
Well, he said they're gonna build a stone wall over there.
If, if she's in opposition and they're proposing to build a wall on her property, it doesn't sound like this makes any sense to even look at, right?
They're gonna build the wall on her property or on his?
No, 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 it's on her property, that's what I was bringing up. So, I mean, I think, I, I think that, you know, the applicant should make a, if, if they can, should make a, a deal with this property owner.
Yes.
Right? And or, or, and or draw a drawing that doesn't encroach on her property.
Okay. All right, you guys all done now or do you have more question for them?
Well, can, can the, can the wall be built not on her property and still have room for a ten-foot driveway?
It's right, the, the wall is right on the property line and where it turns to the right is, is on her property. That's what, that's what I was asking if you had permission.
Yeah.
Dynas, you're, you're muted.
Sometimes it's better when I'm muted. The, 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 a portion of the retaining wall now is, is shown on the, the neighbor's property. We would need to replace an existing wall that, that's there. However, if, if the commission ceased to at least working with the, or approving the proposed grades, we could then speak to the engineering department and, and others with respect to placement of a retaining wall within the right of way. Or, or, or find another, find another means, maybe, uh, maybe we would have to cut elsewhere on the property and come in. But this location that we've got proposed is, I think, the, the, the best shot at getting a driveway into the property.
Well, doesn't make any sense for us to approve for you and you have too many problems going in. You should have, work out the deal with the neighbor first on what you want to do and, and then, and then you come. So we, you have opposition here and she's afraid you, her foundation crumble or get affected. And now you asking us to approve a various of seventeen percent grade.
Mr. Chairman, you keep, you keep cutting out.
Joe, Joe, if you turn your head to the, to the right, we can hear you. When you turn your head to the left, we can't.
Okay.
You're right.
Right. I got two left.
You're perfect.
Which one is that? Okay, uh, what I'm saying is suggesting that you, you work out your, what can you do with your neighbor first and then you come to us. Then we, we approve and as per plan submitted and you're ready to go.
Okay, um, then.
I, I agree with, I agree with the chairman. I say, how can you vote on a grading on a driveway when you're putting a wall on somebody else's property? That, that can't be. If the wall was on.
And if you can't put it on her property, then you gotta redo the drawing. So we can't, you know, it's not gonna make.
You can't do anything until you agree that that can't be on her property and it's gotta be moved over. But then can you make the same type of driveway you're looking to make if you have to move that wall over? There's a question.
Got you, good, good questions. Would, would the commission consider keeping this matter open to, to, to the next month to give us an opportunity or give the property owner an opportunity to speak or?
I think for us, we can, we are flexible as Melissa, can we leave it open?
Yeah.
For one month, right? Yeah.
Yep.
Because right now it makes no sense to approve a, a grading, which you can't do at all.
The plan you have in.
Yeah, so.
And you show what you're gonna do to protect her property if she agreed to that. Then we, you know, we would like to see improvement for you.
You'd need an easement or something from her to be able to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and, and I, I appreciate, I appreciate your, uh, your input on that and certainly we'll, I'll ask, I'll ask my client to approach the neighbor and, and see if there's something that can be discussed or worked out. And take it to the next step.
Okay. So you wanna, you wanna leave it open, you coming back in next meeting or next month?
Yes, if, if, if perhaps we could, we could do that. Looks like maybe someone else might want to speak too, I don't know.
The next meeting, the next meeting is October twenty-third.
Right.
You have, that gives you about what? Sixteen, seventeen days to work this out or whatever. Uh, but if not, sometimes it takes longer than that, then maybe they can push it off.
If you need, if you need thirty days, you need thirty days or fifteen days will do.
Yes, I think if, if we can have thirty days, I'm not sure.
You can discuss that with Melissa or her, and then you come back, you let us know what you're gonna do.
Okay, it looks, looks like our, our neighbor has a question again or.
You're muted, there you go.
No, I just wanted to speak for Kate, I'm her partner. And, you know, we, we feel very uncomfortable with this. Obviously it encroaches on her property. We feel it's a big hazard, so a lot of things need to be proposed. You know, thirty, forty, sixty days or whatever for us to approve it. So I just want to make that crystal clear.
Sir, hold on. Can you tell us who you are first?
Tell your name.
No, no, tell your name, tell your name. Where you live and why you opposed?
I, my name is John Byko and I'm in, I'm, I'm in Ridgefield with, with Kate Jensen. I'm a partner here and I, and I rent in here with her. Yeah.
Are you the owner of the house?
No, but I, I'm, I'm just helping her in the communication of this matter.
Okay.
Make sure it's crystal clear, her position, our position.
Okay, so Mr. Dynas is, I think, look like you have a very serious problem unless you work it out with the neighbor.
I think you.
Our approval not gonna make any sense for you.
I think that's crystal clear. Yes, and, and it needs to, you know, she needs to feel comfortable that it's not a hazard and really affects her property. That's basically what we want to say, okay?
Okay. All right. Anyone in opposition?
So, Mr. Chairman, so the condition now we're doing is we're going to continue this application until such time that they come back in with revisions or a withdrawal.
I don't know if he coming in two weeks or if he coming in thirty days.
Sean, what's, what's the time limit on that?
There's statutory time limits regarding public hearings. Uh, we'll keep track of that, but I believe it's, it might be sixty there, Melissa, as far as.
We would, we would be fine with either, since it's open, with either the October twenty-third, I think it is, meeting or the November thirteenth, I think is the.
What, what's the max that, because I, if they've got to do something legally with the, I mean, likelihood of getting anything done.
I mean, after, after that, we would have to start looking at extensions. We also have the fact that we only have one meeting in December because of the holidays. So I think if it can't be settled by November, we might need to be talking, but we'll be in communication with Dynas in terms of time.
Are they better to withdraw the application and then re-submit?
It doesn't matter at this point whether they withdraw now or they withdraw in November. There's no.
Start talking and he can make a decision. You probably solve it in one day. All right, so we, we need a motion for that to make it, leave it open, coming back. Leave it open, I mean, back.
So, so just to be clear, to, to make this motion to continue. Uh, are we doing an initial thirty days?
Well, I think if we make it up to thirty days, we can make it like that, Sean.
Uh, it'd be no point, we're gonna be holding them to the statutes, so I would just say a straight continuance.
That's, that's, all right, I ju- I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that we get the verbiage uh, right.
You could state which meeting, um, thirty days kind of puts us in no man's land, um, in terms of. Like meetings, so it's up to Dynus.
Continuance then.
With no, no timeframe.
Okay, um. Mister, Mister Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue application twenty-five dash fourteen ninety-nine West Street.
Motion made by Mister Rivers.
Second.
Seconded by Mister Ribero, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll see you next meeting.
Thank you all for your consideration.
Hopefully you can.
And, and, and comments.
In two weeks.
Okay, thank you, we'll let you know.
Right.
Good night.
Good night.
And now. Motion to adjourn.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Say it. Hi, Mister Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bye.
Seconded, bye.
Everybody have a great Columbus Day.